This meeting of the T I S D Board was previously called to order. The presence of a quorum has been established, the meeting has been duly called and noticed the meeting posted in the time and manner required. At this time, we are coming back from executive session and we do not have action, so we will move straight to the prayer and pledge of allegiance if everyone will please stand.
Fire your heads please. Tell me Father, we come to you and acknowledge that you are the one true God who has existed for all eternity, past, as Father, Son, and Spirit. You're the Creator of all that is seen and unseen. You're an awesome God. We're dependent on you for wisdom, and so we ask for it tonight, Father, that you would grant that to us, that you would guide our actions, that you would give us the wisdom that comes from above, that we would not be confused by earthly wisdom, but would look to you. Father, we thank you for the work that you've called us to here, to steward this district, to guide these students and these employees. Father, we thank you for that opportunity and again ask for your wisdom. We ask for your spirit to guide us here tonight as we make decisions and we pray that it would all be honoring to you. Pray this in the name of your Son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you Reverend Hager. We've got a few minutes to approve, Board. If you'll look at Roman numeral seven and I'll take a motion on those.
I move that we approve the meeting items seven A, B, C, D.
Very good. Thank you. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you Ms. Washington. Any discussion or changes to those minutes? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, that motion carries six no, zero. Didn't have anyone sign up for public participation, so we'll move to business, legal, finance. Any of these we want to pull?
No sir, we're not going to pull any.
Okay.
Just to cut one highlight is on item C. It's to tighten up some of our financial control and reporting from booster clubs and PTAs and other sponsorship groups to do some more financial reporting to the principals of those schools along with the district as well. We should appreciate their support, but at the same time, we also need to see where those funds are being held and how they're being generated for our students.
Very well. Alright. No one needs anything pulled? We will take a motion to approve recommendations on nine A, B, C, D, E, and F.
I also move.
Thank you. Second?
I second the motion.
Alright. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. Alright, move on to the instruction consent agenda.
Yes sir, we're recommending that we pull item E, the contract between Andy Woods Elementary and Franklin Covey Leader and Me.
Alright. Board members, anything else you need to pull off that? If not, motion for aye, Roman numeral ten A, B, C, D, and F. Someone? Thank you. Second?
Second.
Very good. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Alright, that's approved. We'll go to E if you want to.
Yeah, last month, we caught some legal challenges, roadblocks within the contract, legal issues within the contract before the board meeting and tabled it for action for the board. We're excited about bringing this back to the board with the appropriate adjustments inside the contract with Leader and Me. It's been successfully implemented at other schools across the district and Andy Woods is now up to the plate, for lack of a better term, to see if they can execute the Leader and Me program to fidelity like we have at places like Jack and even at Bell and even TJ Austin.
Alright, let's get a motion to approve item E.
Mr. President, I move we approve the contract between Andy Woods and the Leader and Me program.
Very good. Is there a second?
I second it.
Alright. Any discussion on that item?
I just had a note here that the implications on it was saying that it's embedded in everyday practice, so it's not going to be a big, another thing that they have to do. It's something that's going to be embedded each day with how they work with its students.
Yes ma'am, it, I think it's great. It's, the Leader and Me program certainly started at Jack Elementary and they, it is embedded, it's intertwined in that campus's DNA. It teaches a lot of self-resilience and ownership of, within the students and the staff there to strive for excellence and we're excited about that.
It's great. We still use it in our house on my ninth grader. He, yeah, it's, it's good concepts and it's, yeah, it doesn't take away from, it just adds to and it's kind of a, gets everybody on the same page too, staff wise, you know? It's really cool.
We only have two schools that's doing the Lead and Me, is that Jack and Andy Woods?
Jack, TJ Austin, Bell, and now Woods.
Okay, good.
Or, anyone else?
Hubbard put it in. So who's not doing it?
See if they can do a package deal for the whole district.
That's right, Hubbard does it because it's in the cups when you drive by Copeland. They have little sayings out there.
Oh really?
Sharpen the saw.
Go Huskies.
First things first.
That's the one we use at our house. First things first.
Begin with the end in mind. There you go.
Alright, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? That is approved. Alright, we'll move on to construction executive summary.
We're excited about this presentation tonight by Mr. Loper. We haven't had a construction executive summary presented to the board in a while, but we're getting close to wrapping up bond 2013. Mr. Loper?
Thank you Dr. Crawford. May be able to stay. You're right, it's been a while. I think the last time we had it, I was praying for the rain to stop. And now we could use just a little bit, just a little. Anyway, it's been May since we had, there's been a lot and I must add that since then we've moved three middle schools and we've moved all the teachers' stuff to all their locations and just for your information, a week ago, decided to allow teachers into these campuses so we could avoid the mad chaos when they come back to unpack and have no time to do that. So they've been, we gave them the opportunity to go to all of the middle schools and three days a week and start unpacking and they get to check in and check out from four to seven, so just to give you an idea, like it more, the first three days are third floors, second three days, second floor, third three days, the first floor, and then fine arts and so on. So had a lot of good response from that and a lot of teachers and I must say that they are working hard to get this done and they are the ones that are helping us make this successful because believe me, I've had my doubts. Anyway, we'll move on here and let's go to Dixie. Dixie Elementary, that's a picture of the front. All the paving in the front is now done. There's topsoil being distributed. That is the new drop-off area that is right at the annex. And that's just a closer look and you can see the connector to the, from the main building to the annex. The roof is all complete on that and all of the concrete is complete on the site as of today, including the sidewalks, the running track in the back, and they're now spreading topsoil and running their irrigation and, and trying to do all their finishes on their ceramic tile in the annex and paint, so. It's coming along real nice. There's, I think, eight rooms in that annex that we had to take care of this summer, not counting moving all the portables and getting all the irrigation and all the landscaping and all that. Rice Elementary had 10 classrooms to redo, four in the annex and six in the main building, which would be their fourth and fifth grade and do the connector between the two so we can fully enclose that, along with finishing the playgrounds and the landscaping and all that. So right now, the roof is finished on that fourth grade wing, the ceiling grid and wall finishes are going in as you can see in that picture. There's the connector and the roof is starting on that tomorrow. So that is, the picture right there, that is the old entryway. That was where the front office was, to the left is all new glass and they're working on the outside to give that old entryway a new look that's conducive and matches all the metal that's on the gymnasium and that's all in process. That, as of this morning, that is now hydromulched. I just took that picture, that's where one of the new playgrounds will go and one of the relocated playgrounds, but it's now hydromulched and they double seeded that so we can get some growth on that. Let's go to Bolter. Wow, I don't know if any of you guys have been by Bolter, but I can say this, we had the right demolition contractor, we had the right abatement contractor on that, that project. No sooner would abatement contractors walk out of those buildings that the demolition contractor was behind them taking bites out of it. We had to get the foundations out from under that building and remove eight foot of dirt out from that building and move one side of the site to the other side of the site to build the football fields. It is completely gone at this point. There's a good kind of before and after picture right there and it's just amazing at what they could do. That's the first leg of the concrete drive, that's 175 foot and it is heading towards the front door from Garden Valley. That tree on the left will be saved. This is a closer look, this morning at 3:00 AM, they started pouring, they poured 380 yards of concrete this morning. That is the front drive. We still have a little piece open and then from there towards us in that picture will be the teacher's parking lot and it's around 95 cars. There's a different look of, and that's what they, piece of what they poured tomorrow, I mean this morning, and then they're still pouring, that's at 7 o'clock this morning, they're pouring. That is the exit that goes to Garden Valley. They're getting final inspections on the inside of the building. This is the back of the building and that's cafeteria with the sunshade over it. They're getting all their final inspections this week and they're doing final punches in some of their final areas. Teachers are there and got good response there. I left there this evening at 6 o'clock just looking at them and they're, everyone's excited and they're doing a good job of unpacking their stuff and going to be ready. Moore Middle School, I just never thought that that courtyard would dry up, but it did. It did. And actually what happened, God let the rain stop when we needed it to stop, which was prior to demolition and which was starting on June 5th, which was the last day of school. So that is a shot, kind of, I'm looking, I'm from the new school looking, that's the old gymnasium and kind of what's left of some of the buildings in front of it. I'd say that that demolition is currently about 95% done. The other gymnasium, that gym right there is gone at this point. The other gymnasium is almost gone as of this evening. Foundations are being removed and the courtyard, our courtyard at Moore has topsoil going in, has sidewalks going in, retaining walls complete, brick layer is done. Thank goodness. And we're doing in the locker room areas, that was the last area that got finished, what we call Area F, is just the way the process went from counterclockwise in the construction motion. So the locker rooms are getting their final coats of paint and, and we're starting to get complete in those areas. The rest of the campus is looking good, floors are waxed, they're getting punched out, teachers are moving in and, and the librarian was moving in and I have her some help for in the morning also. Anyway, this is, I'm standing on the roof looking down at the courtyard, that's the retaining wall I was returning to, referring to, I'm sorry, and then that sloped area is a set of stairs, which there's a kind of other look. And then as you look across there and you see that building way in the distance, that's probably right about the end of the football field, which all that dirt has to move over to there. And they're working, oh, let me go back. That flat area that you see right past the retaining wall, that's the new teacher's parking lot, they're forming that up this evening and then have a scale, pour scheduled for the next few days on that. That's the Mustang. That is what the PTA purchased and it's right in the front for you and y'all will get a good look at that, it's, it's quite impressive.
That Mustang's been there for months.
It has, we, actually when we started-
We didn't know if there was a Mustang in there or not.
It's more than months.
Okay.
When we started hanging steel, we brought the Mustang in and had to build a house over it because it wouldn't fit in the openings. So we built a house and we've been working around it all this time and just last week they unveiled it and, and it's sitting on a three-tiered concrete pedestal that we poured that was, all this was purchased by the PTA, that's engraved with the PTA donors' names in the risers and granite all, in, all the way up. So it's, it's quite impressive.
And the old Mustangs, are they going in?
The old Mustangs, we are retaining that entire area and the little brick walls even have a, what's the equivalent to the Girl Scouts, which Eagle Scout, a young lady wants to do a project there and she's going to rework that area and we're helping her, we're taking some concrete out and expanding the flyer beds, going to get the irrigation going back so whatever she does, so. That little area is going to kind of stay and it's, it never was in the demolition contract supposed to be removed because we tried to save as many trees as we could on the site and so that, it worked out that way and she's happy and she'll be working on that. That's the gymnasium, they got the striping down the other day and they'll be finishing that soon. And this is one of the classrooms, they're one of the teachers set up, so as you can tell, she's unpacked and she's ready to go. Three Lakes. Three Lakes, that picture looks like a rendering to me, but that was this morning. And that picture looks like a rendering and I promise you that SUV is real. I guess my camera just takes good pictures. They've done a great job. They will be applying for their certificate of occupancy tomorrow at Three Lakes, hopefully the city will grant us that. They did their final inspection, I don't know how that went and the health department's the last one that usually gets that. So Jackson Construction is basically doing final cleanup, final landscape areas and final outside cleanup in that. This is, I'm on the roof looking down at the courtyard, straight ahead is the cafeteria, to the left is the main street corridor, so those are all the pavers and the area that will be available for staff, parents, and anyone to use however the principal sees fit. There's the gymnasium, that is the main competition gym, those are the bleachers, they are retracted at this point of course, so it's completed and ready. And also our football field is completed and our track, we're still working on grass back there in our field events, but they'll be wrapping that up. And that's the end of my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Alright, board members, questions?
What project has been the most challenging?
Do you want me to give you an update on Stewart? We're actually doing Stewart right now too, so we're in that process and we have finishes going back in there. I don't know that one was more challenging than another, I mean, if I told you that the rain didn't impact us, that wouldn't be a truthful statement. It impacted us in more ways than really you think. It's not just that when you get rain, you lose three days and then it rains again, then you lose three more days, but it impacts you on the interior because it's hard to get materials into the building when you have to go through mud. And then with it raining and being wet for so long, it's not just Tyler, it's every construction project. And then when it dries out, everyone dries out at the same time, everyone wants to order concrete at the same time, guess what? You have a cement shortage because they can't meet the demand. Right now, that pour that they did at Bolter this morning at 3:00 AM, they had to order that concrete two weeks ago because everybody's ordered. So I guess between the two, Bolter and Moore, as far as the deadlines that we got to meet and it's going to run down to the last moment, I can be very honest and tell you that, is that getting those buildings demo, getting everyone moved out and just that frantic rush because we know we have to get the drop-offs, the parking lots in before school starts so we can get kids and teachers delivered there, that is, was challenging and is challenging. But you know what, we got the right people in the right place. Will the campuses be completely finished and will they be pristine? No, they won't. Will there be things that we're still doing? Absolutely. But will we be done on the inside? Will we be able to have school? Absolutely.
They're looking good. I can't wait to see them landscaped and, and can't wait for them all to look like renderings. That'll be, that'll be great.
Pretty excited. It's been, it's been an honor to be a part of this actually.
Mr. Loper, working on the bond oversight committee and having toured these buildings a couple of times, just want to congratulate you and your staff and then also the contractors too, to hear their plans for what they're doing, to catch up and, and make sure we're ready for school after we had all the rain we did is really impressive. You and your team and those contractors should be commended.
Thank you sir.
Anybody else? Tell me, I drove by Hubbard that I couldn't see from Copeland Road, are the portables gone from the schools that Three Lakes is going to be reducing their size? What's the plan with portables at Paul and Hubbard?
No sir, the, the only portables that have been removed from any of the existing campuses are the ones that went to Van. I think what the plan is, is we reassess what we have in October when we have our snapshot and then we can really see any of the movement with the change of the attendance zones and everyone's in place because we usually see movement all the way up to at that point. I'd hate to take something away or auction something off at that point and then have to get it back. So in my mind, I think that's, that's what I would recommend, but we, I'll certainly do whatever we need to do.
Well, I know that's important. It was to us when this all started and I understand, yeah, we don't want to be dumb about it, but I would say as soon as possible, my opinion is, we need to get, the relief was for those campuses, so let's show the public that there is relief on, on those two in particular, as soon as we can.
Yes sir.
Little nitpicky thing, you know, I see a lot of people putting their landscaping in all over town, commercial projects and all the trees are dying because their sprinkler is hooked up. Just, let's not let us be one of those.
I promise you.
Six months ago, I asked about the info history plaques for the people like at Three Lakes Gymnasium, McCollman Gymnasium. Where are we on, on that?
That has all been turned in to the sign company. We haven't, we've received the lettering for it, Three Lakes, it's Bill and Ann Coleman and there's a little bio that was supplied to us and picture of them that has been already submitted to the sign shop. It may in fact be ready now, I'm just, I hadn't asked that this week, but it wasn't ready last week, I know. The lettering was.
You anticipate it being ready by the time school?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Alright, and the, just a side note, the Dixie little rotunda, looks like y'all did a little something different than the original plan on the circular facing on that. It looks good, but I was just going to tell you that, that was a good change and Dixie really, really ties in well. Can't wait to see both of the Rice and Dixie and it's got to be fun for those kids to being able to get what amounts to a new school there.
One, one thing I can tell you, as, as we have put sidewalk all the way around that 29 acres at Dixie, completely around those four blocks, I can tell you this, that the community has accepted that well because I've been over there at 6:00 in the morning, I've been over there until 7:00 at night and they utilize that sidewalk. As a matter of fact, there are two ladies that asked me how long it was around there. I don't know, hold on, I got my truck and clocked it. So it's a little over three quarters of a mile.
Alright, and we heard you correct that every school will be ready August 24th for kids?
Yes sir.
And we're under budget, on budget?
We are under budget.
Okay.
Today.
Speaking of August 24th and new schools, are we ahead of the curve on anticipating how drop-off is going to go at these new campuses?
That's a very good question. I actually have giving the site plans to all of our principals and they are in that process of developing the drop-offs and, and the areas that are drop-offs, the age, the grade levels, the bus route where they drop off in anticipation of sending flyers to the parents ahead of time, but I'm going a little bit further than that, we're going to take their recommendation, then I'm going to have the architects make some really nice looking drawings, color-coded and all that for not only their drop-offs, but their tornado drills or fire escape plans and all that, so. And that's in process this week.
Because I know, you could build the Taj Mahal, but if the drop-offs, it's all you hear about.
You know, I think the good thing is, I've had to drop my kids off when I had kids in school, but I didn't always follow the way, but the other parents usually let me know that.
But, you know, once everybody gets acclimated, it will be, it doesn't matter how good your plan, there'll be a little chaos, but everyone gets acclimated rather quickly. Well, it's exciting. Okay, nobody has any more questions? We'll move on to the-
Thanks Dan.
-Bolter Middle School Verizon Project Lead the Way grant.
Yes sir, this is an information item for the board that the district has been awarded via a notification, the amount of $20,000 from Project Lead the Way. It did not meet the $25,000 board threshold. We did receive the grant, we applied from it, applied for it, but we thought it was of importance that Bolter did receive, receive that opportunity to continue the Project Lead the Way at their campus, to keep the board informed of that relationship we have with Project Lead the Way from Verizon, to make a special notation of it in the superintendent staff report. So the board has been informed of that grant and we are certainly excited to have that relationship with Verizon, Project Lead the Way.
Any questions, board members? Alright, then we have a discussion item on the student code of conduct.
It's the first reading, student code of conduct. Certainly, the student code of conduct that's presented to the board tonight, to the public tonight, is one of those that does have adjustments in it. This is a post-legislate legislative student code of conduct. As you know, we just finished up the legislative session down in Austin and some of the statute and code requirements that have been adjusted into the legislature is now trickling down to school districts and there are adjustments within the student code of conduct that have been made, those are colorized. I believe we've gone from red to blue. There's strike through, there's blue in there as well. So I encourage the board to peruse this document. If you have any questions, certainly we would love to answer those for you. You can contact Ken Vaughn or myself or any of the other chief administrative officers so that we can take you through some of the student code of conduct adjustments that have been made. And certainly next board meeting, we can certainly also talk about it at that time as well. This is a first reading.
Alright. Any comments, board members this time? As Dr. Crawford said, encourage you- As Dr. Crawford said, encourage you on these type of items to call him between board meetings. If there's any, anything you have a question on or want further explanation on, that would be a good time to do that. Anybody? Everybody good? Okay. Future business?
Yes, sir. I want to start off with future business that's actually not on here, but five board members today, along with the superintendent, were able to attend the graduation of students at Boe Shear School. And I encourage the public to force us to go to another venue because we can't hold them at Boe Shear. It's one of the special events at Tyler ISD conducts every year. It was a packed house tonight at Boe Shear's. It was really neat. But next July, so that's why I'm saying it's future business. That way I'm staying with the agenda. Next July, I certainly hope that if you're, if you're watching on TV tonight or you're in the audience, that you attend that and see the, the hearts in those kids and their families and how proud they are of our, of our challenged students. One comment I'll make about that is that as we said, the pledge of allegiance led by a student at Boe Shear's, looking at our flag, there's not many countries in the world that would set up a structure and have a school like we have here in Tyler, Texas. And we are very appreciative for those that have sacrificed so that we can provide education for all kids. And certainly it was a pretty emotional moment. I wanted to go on record tonight and say next July, if you fit into your calendar, please attend that. That's a neat experience. We need to make sure, staff, that we don't have any conflicts next year. So I'd like to see everybody there. A, Board Workshop, August 3rd. School is cool, August 13th. We're excited about that. That's at, that's at Harvey Hall. Had thousands of students there that attended for backpacks and whatnot. Excited about that again. The first ribbon cutting of our new school buildings, August 16th. That's a Sunday. I believe that's a 2:00 start. August 17th at Moore Middle School. I think that's in the early evening. August 18th, same thing at Three Lakes Middle School where I think they're also having a tailgate party prior to that. August 20th, regular meeting. August 22nd, summer school graduation. And then August 24th, here they come, first day of school for students. That's the future business.
Very good. It's an exciting time, August. It's going to be fun opening some new schools. All right, board, if, I think that's about all we have for tonight. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Thank you. Dr. Nation, second?
I second one more.
Washington, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five points. Just Washington votes not to adjourn.
He always wanted to.